Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Workshop. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Mark Atkins to do our prayer, and if Hal Loughlin will lead us in. Pledge, please, you'll stand with us.
Chief Loughlin. Father, thank you for the new year ahead of us, Lord. We just know that everything that we say and do is all because of you, and it's something we shouldn't take for granted, Father. So as we look into the 2018 season, Father, we continue to ask prayer and protection for those that serve our city, those that are employed by our town, Father, that they remain safe, Lord, especially this time of year with the cold weather and the heaters and things that fire departments have to work with, and police safety, Father, and just our employees out taking care of the town in such cold weather. We just pray for all of them, a hedge of protection around them. Father, we also lift up Mike Strange here at the town, Father, because of the loss of his father recently, and also Mr. Gill, Harry Gill's wife, Leanne, has lost her father today. We ask that you just continue to watch over these families, Lord, give them peace and comfort. Go with us now as we deliberate the business of the town, continue to watch over us, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Hal. Okay, we only have a couple items on our agenda tonight. So our first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 50 parcel 10.00, containing approximately 16.97 acres. It's requested by John Floyd to go from R1 to PRD. The property is located at 401 Amleville Road, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
This is, nothing has changed since your first reading. This is for a PRD for 162 unit townhouse development. It'll be very similar in design and everything, as the adjoining Lee Crosson Development is strictly adjacent to it, and Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on this? Kevin, I did have a neighbor who is across the street ask me that there had been a drainage pipe that had been put in quite a few years ago. Are you familiar?
Probably was when the original, the original development was done, or maybe at a different time. I'm not real familiar with that, no, not exactly.
I assured them that no other water should be put on them, but they just specifically asked if we could just make sure that that doesn't get covered or anything like that, and I told them that shouldn't be an issue. So can you just make sure?
Okay.
Okay. Item two is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28 parcel 72.06 and part of parcel 72.03, containing approximately 3.56 acres. It's requested by Greg Gamble to go from C2 to PUD. The property is located on Isabella Lane, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
This is a PUD request for a couple things. It's currently C2, and it would be for a PUD to allow for a commercial building, about 15,000 square feet commercial building, as well as a three-story, 84,000 square feet total climate-controlled self-storage building, and that's the reason they had to ask for the rezoning. That is not allowed in the C2 zone. So again, nothing has changed since your first reading, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Questions or comments for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda, and we'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the municipal code Title III Municipal Court, Chapter One Town Court Administration, Section 3-101, the establishment of full-time town courts, Section 3-102, maintenance of dockets, Section 3-108 imposition of fines, penalties, and costs in Section 3-110 disposition and reports of fines, penalties, and costs. This is a second reading. Man, that one was a long one.
Mayor and Council, we'll try to make that longer next time.
Thanks.
Add harder words, I think.
Well, I was feeling like I was reading stuff for the chemicals for the wastewater plant.
I didn't see algebraic in there anywhere.
I'll figure out a way to work it in.
Thanks.
If it's germane to the... As you say, this is a second reading. Does not substantially change any operations of the court, just basically to clean up and clarify what was already there. Statutorily, the duties of the clerk, as well as for the judge's office, to clarify who's to keep the dockets and who's responsible for the accounting. And while we were changing it also, we ensured that the provisions were gender neutral as well for this position.
And I know both the clerk and the judge have both looked over it, so...
Yes, and I appreciate the clerk and the judge. We had sent out prior to requalification that, hey, if you have any changes that you'd like to see, and they responded with the...
Great. Questions for Jeff on this? Then we'll move on to item four, which is consideration of an ordinance amending municipal code Title 16 Streets Sidewalks, etc., Chapter One Miscellaneous, Section 16-110 Parades, etc., Regulated. Second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, and again, this is a second reading. Kind of spoke extensively last time. This basically puts a process in place for those who want to conduct a parade or have a public gathering on a town property or town facility area. Prior to this, it was very vague, so this just outlines a process for folks that, citizens or other groups that want to come in, they have a process they can follow that allows for the chief of police to have input and to ensure that the citizens can conduct it in a safe manner.
And I was not here for the last meeting. Did you all set an amount?
That is one thing I wanted to come back with, because I even went back to listen to the meeting, so I just wanted to make sure. I had recommended $100 for parade, $200 for the public gathering. Obviously, there's provisions for those that cannot afford, but that would be my recommendation, and if the councils are okay with it, I'd also like to add in at council meeting amendment to the fee ordinance.
Feedback on the $100 and $200, if that's Jeff's recommendation, I'm good with that. What about you all?
Yeah, I think I was fine with that, too. I think we discussed it a little bit.
Did you discuss it?
Yeah, we discussed it.
Okay, good.
Is there a way that you could put some sort of caveat in there that would indicate that if it was an event which required, I don't know, more police or town services to go along with it, that that can be adjusted accordingly?
Well, keep in mind, this is only the application process. This is just the application. They would not get into...
But does it leave it open for adding that to it? I mean...
Well, the fee, we can't really charge a fee to cover all the cost of a parade or a public gathering. If you'll notice in there, even references for recreational purposes is really where we start having the meat, but if it's just a group of people, say for some type of current political issue or socioeconomic issue that's going on, then we're limited on, we cannot say, hey, you cannot have this gathering out here at the park simply because we want you to pay for everything. Now, there are provisions in here that allow for the chief to decide where it's going to be, what's the best avenue for it to be when it comes to gathering. When it comes to parades, that is where the chief then can determine that you need to, you know, show me what kind of security personnel that you're going to have along the lines to make sure that nobody gets run over or that it doesn't run amok. But as far as just having them reimburse the town for all of those expenses, even though we would like that, it's just not legal.
Jeff, one thing that I thought about after we met last time, and you actually jarred my memory, on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have a few special cases that come to the Board of Zoning Appeals for review and approval, like food truck permits and the permit to allow the fair to be over by the bowling alley, some of those kind of events. Does it make sense for this to come through that board for review and approval potentially, like those other events?
I think that we could if we wanted to look at having some type of zoning issue. I've not seen that happen with any other entity, any other government. Of course, keep in mind, we're dealing with First Amendment issues here, not just those are for profit, usually what we're dealing with carnivals and things of that nature. So it's a little bit different. Now, we've got recreational that's built into here for the chief to look at, but if you'd like me to go back and explore that, I can, but I don't know timewise, they would have to know pretty far out.
If you could explore it without making changes, I'm okay for this to move forward if it doesn't make sense to do that.
True.
But if you find something that does fit, then I'd rather get it right the first time.
True.
Than come back and do it a second time, if that makes sense. I don't want to slow this down or keep it from moving forward the next time if you determine there doesn't make sense for that.
So explain to me, in section, I've lost it now, with section five, three, that talked about with parades, that it could be, that the chief could determine if more security was needed, no, D, three. It says, "When held for recreational purposes," talking about the parade, why is it legal to say he can designate security personnel for the parade, but not legal for it to say that it can be designated for a gathering?
Well, number one, because you're in the street, and it's a safety issue of being in a street where traffic, you've got to block traffic.
Okay.
We don't have any choice with that.
Okay.
If you're at a park or what have you, then it's not, from all the information, and obviously Nathan did a lot of research on this with constitutional basis, as well as other communities, and there was no, couldn't require, they got into a sticky situation, started requiring for the town parks to have, require them to hire police officers and things of that nature.
Okay. Okay, other questions for Jeff on this? Okay, we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperation and mutual aid agreement between the Smyrna Police Department and other law enforcement agencies within Rutherford County. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. This is strictly just an agreement between us, the TBI, and the other law enforcement agencies here, just establishing some protocol and perimeters in regards to investigation of mainly criminal gang-type actions.
Okay. Questions for Chief on this? Was this at the recommendation of...
The Tennessee Bureau of Investigation.
Chief, is this only for Rutherford County forces?
It's only for Rutherford County, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief? Move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Radio Systems Corporation relative to the Tennessee Dog Park Grant. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Jimmy Stitt, who's a staff member for us, and most of you have met Jimmy, applied and received on behalf of the department a $10,000 grant from Radio Systems Corporation for a dog park improvements or new facility. Obviously, we just built one, so we would use this for improvements to the existing dog park, and I know Jeff is looking it over, too. He had a couple of questions, so we've sent that back to this organization to get answers on that, but we will just ask for approval based on Jeff's recommendations.
Great. Questions for Mike? We always appreciate you all going after these grants, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Nice job. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a special event application to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers relative to the 2018 Boat Day Water Fest.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this will be the 11th Annual Boat Day Water Fest, we're having down in Sharpshires Park, will be around mid-June, and that date will be secured later on. It's just an obligation to Army Corps to be able to allow us to use the facility.
Questions for Tom? Mr. Gill told me that he'd like to be the one to kick it off and take the canoe out this year.
Let him know you said that.
He also wanted to know if you could build a ramp to get headed out better.
Or just some water wings would be all right.
Okay, so we will put that on the, I think we need to have shirts made up. Were there any photos taken last year?
All right. We've been fur. Tom would like you to move on.
And I think we all need to say that that was Tom's recommendation.
Yes.
Maybe Brittany can show up, too.
Let's not get into last year.
We'll move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with blank relative to the ITS Phase Three and Four and Five NEPA and Design Services.
Yes, thank you. We had received the, we ran into RFQ, we received responses back, and we've not completed all the reviews of that. We're still waiting on one review to be completed. We'll unmask the score and have the recommended consultant at the council meeting.
Questions for Tom on that? Okay. Anything under other tonight before we move on to staff updates? Okay. Chief, you're up.
Yes, ma'am. Just to advise everyone, the police officers this year did over 100 kids for Shop With a Cop and did over 270 food baskets for our elderly. So I just want to commend them. I mean, it's something they do every year. I think people just kind of expect it, but again, it takes a lot of work, takes several days to organize and do all this, and a lot of fundraising and things of that nature to be able to pay for it, too. So again, I just want to commend our people for keeping up this Christmas spirit, so...
Great. Questions or comments for Chief? And your Citizens Police Academy, people can still sign up for...
Yes, they can. They can still sign up through the website. It should, we'll be firing it up, I think, about the first or second week of February. Again, it runs, I think, approximately 12 weeks. It's an excellent program for our citizens to understand what our department does, why they see five patrol cars on the side of the street, the variety of questions that I get quite often, and, but at the same time, last year, we opened it up to those 16 and above, and we got a lot of the criminal justice students to come in, and it was very successful last year. So we've done that again this year.
It is an excellent program that you all put together.
Thank you. We work very hard on that to make sure it is a good program.
Make sure to pass along to your staff how appreciative we are of what they do with the Shop With a Cop. I mean, I hate that we even have to do it, but we sure are appreciative that they step up and take on that role.
That's all right. I definitely will. Thank you.
Chief, real quick, have you got an update on the Chaplin surgery?
I have not. I've not heard anything on Terry.
I know, we were wondering about him.
So I'm assuming everything's good, since I haven't heard anything.
Good, okay. Let them know we're thinking of it.
I will, I will.
Anything else? Okay. Steve, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good.
Tonight, I'll give you just some, kind of like Rex Kather version, I'll give you some numbers tonight. Since we just finished the year, ran some numbers, looks like we did about 2,300 permits last year, which is obviously quite a lot. One thing that's kind of interesting is that one-third of those permits this past year were done online. So that's a very significant number, I think. Also, another group of numbers to give to you, we've not done electric permits inspections that long, but through 11 months of last year, our revenues for electric permits were not quite $125,000, which, if you kind of annualize that, that would be about $135,000 for the year, so...
And refresh my memory, what did you, was that kind of in line with what you thought, or is it a little bit higher than what you thought?
It's actually higher than what I thought. Yeah, I was, I think I was projecting somewhere between 80 and 120, so we're right above that.
Good. Questions for Steve? Thanks. Hi, Robert.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and Council. Information Services is working on, we've completed the computer inventory, and we're working on getting all that prepared for the budget for the upcoming budget season. Big project that really impacts the public is the AV upgrade at the Event Center, and that has been in operation for about a month now, and we are nearing completion. We're about 5% away from nearing completion of that, and it's almost there.
Great. Questions for Robert? Mike?
Real quick, Robert, update on Planning Commission technology, iPad service, whatever?
We've got those. We've been swamped with, in December, with a number of things, but we've got those, and I hesitate to give an exact date, but we're going to get those out as soon as possible.
All right.
Very, very shortly.
We have planning this week, and I'm sure that question will probably come up, so... Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, just a couple of project updates. The Coos Memorial, you'll see this in your report tomorrow, but they've obviously been halted by some cold weather and some rainy weather, but they have got a lot done. If you haven't been by there and been on site, it's worth at least driving up there and looking over the old airbase there. They've got some footers poured, and they've got some, some of the planters are formed up, so we're excited about that, and they've got a lot of electrical put in, underground electrical, so it's a good thing. And they're trying to move forward, and we're all looking at weather to see when they can pour concrete. Also, we've moved our efforts over to the Cedarstone Park design, and we've been working with Dempsey &amp; Dillon on finalizing the layout. We had to revise that due to removal of the miracle field and changing our concession stand, and also looking at some ways to cut the construction cost, just because the construction costs are fairly high right now. So we finalized the layout today, and then they'll keep working with our subcontractors to get a design together and bid that project out. Also, over the holidays, we received some updated plans to the Nolan Drive project, and I will send those over to Mr. Gill, Kevin, and Tom to look at as well. They've, I think they're about 90% complete, so if there's things we want to look at to change, this is the time to do those. Our goal was to get that designed, that way if you guys decided you wanted to bid that out in the upcoming budget, you could. Also, just over the holidays, we've been fairly busy now at the Outdoor Center. We've had kids in for Parents' Night Out, about 30 kids for that night, and then our New Year's Eve bash had about 16 kids, so that was a good night for us. So a long night for staff, but a good night for the kids. That's it.
Nolan Drive, does that all have to go through Airport Authority Board and all that?
It does, and we've, they've already approved the design.
Okay.
I think once we finalize it, we'll send it to them once again.
Okay. Other questions for Mike? Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Kevin?
This is, Mr. Atkins said, we do have Planning Commission this week. We have about three items that will be coming to you all, and one annexation and a couple zoning requests and some Platts and Site Plans, and I did send earlier today the breakdowns that you all had requested on the two, our two planning projects, the downtown plan and the comp plan update, that the consultants had sent me on both of those projects. So that was the email today, as you may not have received it or seen yet.
Questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin. Rex?
Mayor and Council, November local sales tax received $1,23,253. That gives us a year-to-date $264,996 deficit. November state share tax received $478,642. That gives us a year-to-date deficit of $14,207. We hope to have the audit posted to the website next week, and we've started the budget process with the calendar being distributed to the direct staff today.
Questions for Rex? Thanks, Rex. Mark, how are you?
Pretty good, ma'am. Evening, Mayor and Council. Filling in for Mr. Strange, as he deals with the loss of his dad, so just keep him in your thoughts and prayers. As far as utilities are going, right now, we're dealing with cold weather. This is about our fifth straight day of sub 32-degree temperatures. The guys have been out unthawing about a little over 60-plus meters just today alone, just to help keep everybody with some water. So if you can, keep those faucets dripping. It saves a lot of heartache on the back end. Also, too, on the 9th of January, we'll be bidding out our requests for qualifications for sewer INI projects, so that'll be opening up. We'll be reviewing those proposals, and then come February, we should have a recommendation before y'all to make a call on that. And right now, that's all we've got for utilities.
Questions for Mark?
Pretty cold, isn't it, Mark?
Yes, sir. Very.
What's a sewer INI?
That's the inflow and infiltration study. That's where we're going to look at the sewer system and decide, and look and see how much inflow, how much stormwater or rainfall is entering the system, so we can figure out what rehab projects we need to set to correct that, to keep sewer in and keep stormwater out.
Very good.
Other questions for Mark? Thank you. Tom?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Kind of like what Steve was talking about earlier, a little recap on 2017. In 2016, the end of 2016, we had issued 35 grading permits. The end of 2017, we issued 41 grading permits. Those are a neat thing from commercial to industrial to subdivision projects. Also, a little update on our Stonecrest-Sammerly project. The additional funds from the NPO did get approved, so the tip page is going to be revised, or will be revised. I talked to Anna Emerson about a week and a half ago. She was trying to get that completed before the holidays, sent to TDOT. I'm not sure if that happened or not, but hopefully the next week or so. That page will be sent to TDOT, and we'll be able to submit that to FHWA for approval to go to construction phase on the Stonecrest-Sammerly intersection project. With the Weekly Swan project, we had to get the instruments re-signed, because TDOT lawyers did not like the language in that. We have four of them submitted, and I've been working with Jeff Beach. He's been successful with one of the property owners, given them to sign, and we're trying to get the other two to get the instrument re-signed and resubmitted so that we can also move forward with that project. We have submitted everything. We do have right-of-way approval on Weekly Swan, but now we've submitted our bid book, bid advertisement, as well as the utility plans to TDOT for review, so we're also waiting on TDOT to approve those. With the Phases One and Two of the ITS project, we do have a right-of-way approval on that as well, and we will be submitting the bid book, bid advertisement, and utility plans to them shortly for approval. After that, once I get it approved, we'll be able to go into construction phase shortly after that, so three significant projects that should be working its way into construction phase here in the next couple of months.
Questions for Tom?
For Weekly Swan, I know you guys are working on it, but is there a contingency plan? I mean, and I know we've been trying to get signatures for a while now, but what happens if we don't? How do we move it forward?
Well, basically, we've got to get the signatures, but just let me explain kind of what's, what happened there, what's going on there. Depending on who you speak with at TDOT or who reviews your documents is, can vary. What happened, and we're not talking a significant, it's really only a preference with the changes in the deeds. The main issue with the last deeds that they had was we had placed in there temporary construct, or had, we had temporary easement. They wanted it to say construction easement. Well, legally, they're the same thing, but they wanted that word changed, and they didn't accept it for that purpose. As well as Mr. Talbert, who had, was on the deed, you've seen, where you see where attorney puts on your document, prepared by, gives the attorney, gives the name. The attorney that had reviewed it thought that it looked too much like an advertisement instead of a signature, so that was another thing that they had denied. Obviously, then the problem is, because when all that's submitted then to TDOT, everything is done on our end by the time we submit all that, so the folks have been paid. So then you have the issue of going back to the people that don't have as much benefit from you tracking them down to re-sign it, because they're not receiving anything in exchange. Now, we're lucky, we've got the folks here in Smyrna, there's the other lady, I'm pretty sure that we'll be able to get her done, I think I've tracked her down, and then the remaining tower is the name on it. Those folks are in Florida, so we've got to go through a, I believe it's a business. They have a point of contact, so I'm going to be working with them to try to get that. So I think we'll get them all done. All that said, I think we can get those done fairly quickly, but that's where, as far as on my end of the deeds, that's where it ran amok, was when TDOT did not accept them. And I just want you to understand, it was not for substantial faults, it was really just preferences that still could have been recorded and would have been recorded with no legal problem, it's just that's what they want. And we kind of do...
Is there any chance we can talk to them and let them know what a headache this has been, and they might possibly accept?
Well, it actually, thanks to Tom, they actually even wanted more changes again, but he kind of put his foot down and said, look, we can't go back to these people. and said, "Look, we can't go back to these people again and again."
And they've been paid, have they not?
Yes. I sent out an email today to one of the TDOT attorneys and just kind of let them know that, you know, "Look, this is wreaking havoc with our timeline." But all that said, this should be taken care of pretty quick.
Just a question from a process perspective. If we're going to do this, this way, where people get paid, then there's no incentive for them to come back to the table and hurry to do anything. Should we look at maybe having some sort of review by TDOT before closing and giving them their money?
Well, actually, keep in mind, involved the entire time, even with these documents, I forgot his name that works right of way.
Aaron Kirkpatrick.
Aaron, but then there's the other guy, Rhett. Anyway, all along the way, we're working with TDOT. We're working with our representative, working with our land acquisition agents, so everybody's looking at these documents all the way. And this guy worked for the Right-of-Way Division for twenty-something years. He didn't notice anything with it. So it's not like something that just stuck out, "Hey, this is wrong." It just got to their staff attorney, the, one of the staff attorneys is down there, and they said, "No, we want it to say this. We don't want it to say that."
Well, I guess my question is, can we not get that review approved so that we don't have to jump through this hoop in the future? I mean, we're closing and giving funds to these landowners.
Right, we will try, but just know that that's how, for TDOT, that's how they do it. You have to compile everything. You send it to them once the land is acquired. Only until the land is acquired-
That's still the time they'll look at it?
Signed off, will they approve it at that level. Because, see, other people that had already seen this, that we're dealing with in the day-to-day, this went to the staff attorney beyond that. But I hear what you're saying, and obviously, we're going to do everything we can to keep this from happening again.
But they have to have it closed before they'll even-
Right, before it's submitted.
Before they'll open the book.
Right, when it's submitted, that's when they get it. And that's what's unfortunate, because I agree, it would, the best-case scenario would be, we know that there's no problems or anything else, which I don't foresee any past this anyway, but-
What about funding, though? I mean, we could, we could have signed signatures and closed a document, but no funds distributed until TDOT signs off on it. Is that possible?
Under their Uniform Act, it doesn't work that way, but I can talk to them and find out, because it's very strict. You know, that's why with Enon Springs, which I was going to talk about in just a minute, we've kind of been lightning speed with Enon Springs, but it's because the Uniform Act that we have to follow under federal and state guidelines is not involved. We can go out there and say, "We've had an appraisal. This is what we want to pay you. Do you agree?" Bam. There's about fourteen steps with each one of these Uniform Act properties, and they're very regimented on what you're, how you're going to do it.
Why are we not following the Uniform Act on that? Because I thought when we met with Paul Diggs that we had to follow that.
Well, we are following the Uniform Act on acquiring the property for Enon Springs West.
Okay.
So we are, but I guess what Jeff was referencing is that we're not, we don't have the-
Okay.
We don't have to do things in series. We can do things at the same time.
Okay. Because I knew when we met with Paul, he said that we had to follow that if we ever want to get federal funds in the future, so.
Right, as far as reappraisal and that kind of thing.
I see.
But when it's actual TDOT project, they're more stickler.
And I guess that's where the frustration level for us and for citizens and everybody else comes in. When it's a town project, we can move a lot faster. When it's a TDOT project, it may be one or two words in a document that's how long, but it gets turned back around, and it takes months-
Right.
-to work out, so.
And even with State Revolving Fund, as you know, we used on Fort Worth, we didn't have any issues with that.
Right.
It wasn't until we had the actual TDOT project that-
Right.
Would we have any position to where we could hold funds on signed contracts until it's finished through TDOT? In other words, back to the landowner, the proprietor? They've been paid on this project. This is water under the bridge. But I'm just wondering if funds can be escrowed and held until which time it's all approved by TDOT. Then everybody gets their money. It gives them more incentive to come back to the table and sign documents that need to be signed, as opposed to not worrying about it anymore, they've gotten their money. Just, and I know we do that in this business I'm in. I don't know if it's, this is government, TDOT's a whole different, whole different thing. I get that. But it may be a way to not disperse funds to these proprietors until we've received, the towns received approval from TDOT.
Can you look into that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, that'd be great.
And one last thing, just so you know, in the TDOT manual says construction easement.
So he wrote it the way it's supposed to be written.
Yes.
Tom, and I don't know how much hassle this would be, is there any way you could do a, for council, a timeline in regards to Stonecrest and a timeline in regards to Weekly and Swan? Just, okay, these are the next steps. This is when I'm thinking this is going to be happening, just so that we have a timeline?
Yeah, you want to just email it out?
That'd be great.
Okay, let me do that.
What do we think the timeline is to get the company or person in Florida to respond?
Obviously, I can't answer that. Well, I'm trying to get it done this week. I'm trying to do my best to get it done within the next two weeks to have it fully backed, but without being in control of those. The folks in Florida, I don't, I wouldn't know.
Yeah, I was able to get ahold of him again today. I talked to him a few days ago. And then when he was off work, he asked me to call him today, so I called him this morning. And he was going to get the document together and mail it off. Hopefully, he did. I'm going to call him again to check with him, make sure he did. Just probably call him every day this week until he tells me it's in the mail.
Call him every hour until he does.
Well, you know, I'm at a point, do you hire a service to show up at his business with a document, have him sign it, you know?
Not a bad idea.
Or I can drive to Florida. I was thinking of that. And we are doing, just so you know, we are doing things like that. Like this morning at eight-thirty, I was doing a closing in Nashville. So we're going to folks' homes to get all these things done.
Will you drop us an email on Friday and let us know, kind of update us to where things are with those? That'd be great. Okay, Hal, how are you?
I'm good. Good evening, Mayor and Council. No, ma'am, have not. We were enjoying a quite mild fall and winter until this arctic blast hit us. But we're using this time to do some indoor work for the staff. They're doing all the equipment maintenance on the golf course equipment and all the golf carts. We also are completing a two-year project we started two years ago. The bunkers on the course were originally built in nineteen ninety-two. And over the time, we've had probably half of them where the drain tile would collapse, they would hold water, they wouldn't drain properly. So we started last summer, and we totally rebuilt four of them, and we have three more that we're finishing up. So they have those, they have two of the three dug out now, the drain tile out, all the pea gravel out, and we're in the process of refurb- That's what that large pile of white sand that comes from Jackson, Tennessee is out in the parking lot. We are also taking outings. Anybody, let the public know that we're signing up now outings for this spring and summer and fall, and some of the spots, especially on Fridays fill up quite fast. Jeff Craig was the first to get his down for the United Way event in May, but I got him a couple of dates penciled in. And other than that, we're just waiting on warm weather to kick back in.
I saw, what, Monday it's just to be up to fifty, I think? Is that what I saw?
Yes.
So hopefully, it'll be a little warmer. Online, how are things?
Oh, it's quite well. It's-
Good.
I mean, the transition to convert people was, it was about a three-week learning curve for the staff, which was the roughest part. But we're running right now through the, I haven't done December's numbers yet, but through the end of November, we're about twenty-six percent of all our bookings are online. One of the things that I was quite proud of during that timeframe, twenty-three percent of them are coming through the golf course website, which means those customers are not paying fees to GolfNow. So only three percent are going through GolfNow to have to pay that. The hot deals are still hot deals, and they were running probably about eighty percent on regular days of those getting filled. So it's, all in all, it's been a really good transaction. It's, our transfer, it's streamlined the whole process for us, working quite well. One of the things I would like to let the public know, and any of you that, if you're not signed up on it yet, but part of the marketing strategy that we get through GolfNow, we get Facebook. I get anywhere from four to seven Facebook posts a week from them, and then there, we just started doing Twitter, so you can follow the golf course on Twitter, and they do email blasts every week. So you can go to, if you sign up for any one of them, you create a profile through our website for GolfNow, you'll get the email blast. If you won't get the tweets, you'll get the Twitter feeds that go out. So that's been, our accounts on Facebook have gone up dramatically since GolfNow really kicked in the marketing aspect of it.
Great, good to hear. Questions for Hal? Thanks, Hal. Ms. Diane, how are things?
Busy. We've had a busy December, but mainly because people have taken some vacation time. We issued thirty new business licenses, and of course, we have beer board coming up Monday and then council meeting Tuesday, so we'll see you again next week. Also, the night, we should start training on the new utility billing system, so we'll be with that.
Great. Any other questions for Ms. Diane? Thank you, ma'am. Jeff?
Spoke to most of it there, but the, been working with Jeff Craig and his office on a bullying policy. The state legislature passed a law that allows for some live utility coverage for municipalities if they pass a, something that's similar to the model policy that MTS has come out with, or TASSER came out with, actually, for bullying in the workplace, as well as, I've been working with the River of Life. They have a proposed agreement, working with them to hopefully extend the Potomac Place. And just waiting on them to approve on there, and then I'll bring it to you.
Great. Questions for Jeff? Raquel?
Just happy new year to everyone, to all the town employees, and I'd like to extend my condolences to Mr. Strange's family, as well as Mr. Gill and his family.
HG?
The same. Happy new year and condolences to Mr. Gill and to Mike.
I mean, I would echo the same.
Steve?
I'm going to echo the same as well. Obviously, this time of year is a rough time of year for illnesses. There's been a lot of folks that have been in and out of hospital. I've heard some school systems closing down for flu, so stay warm, stay clean, and keep your hands sanitized, and hopefully, you can keep from getting sick. I appreciate everything you guys have done. There's some really good, positive things I heard from all the directors. There was a few that are near and dear to my heart, like the parks and GolfNow, and some of the things that I've really pushed to get involved in, and I'm really glad to see that they're moving forward and doing well. So, thank y'all.
Lauren?
The same. Happy new year and condolences to both of the families.
It's never a good time, you know, to have to lose anybody, especially this time of year. So I know Leanne and her dad were very close, so we wish them all the best and peace and comfort in the loss of her father, Mr. Gill's family, and also Mike, that was unexpected, best I could understand. So that happened without any notification. I mean, you know, so Mike will be back with us at some point soon, but we want to let him and Jill and the family know that we're thinking of them. You know, also, something came to my mind when Steve was talking about the illnesses in school and so forth. My wife actually works at Smyrna Elementary School, and I hear a lot about the illnesses in kids that coming in and out of there. But our teachers and our nurses, this time of year, are pretty busy people. And so we just need to continue to keep those people in our thoughts and prayers, too, because they're the ones really doing a lot to help our kids and to keep us healthy. So I think we take that for granted, so I want to just put a little special thank you out there for the season to those people. And Rex will appreciate this. Christmas is three-hundred-and-fifty-six more days, Rex, and we need people to shop local and shop often, right? That's all I have. Thanks.
A couple of upcoming events. First of all, is our Christmas tree drop-off. So when you're ready to say goodbye to your live Christmas trees, you can take off all the decorations and drop the tree off at the football field area at the Lee Victory Recreation Park through January the fourteenth, and Smyrna Parks and Recreation will mulch it and use it for existing and future trails. The address for the rec park is one-ten Sam Ridley Parkway. Also, we have the Frozen Winter Celebration, which will take place Saturday, January the thirteenth, from two to six. Make some snow with your favorite Disney characters. Elsa, Anna, and Olaf. Invite your family for a winter celebration at the SOAC. They'll dance, sing, and eat snacks, make frozen crafts and frozen experiments. Costumes are encouraged. So, Mark, you can bring out that Elsa costume that you have, and I'm sure you'll look nice, but that is.
Is that those Frozen people? I feel like one of them right now.
That's right. And parents get in free starting at two PM. The Sister City program is recruiting students for their program. Applications can be found on the Town of Smyrna website, or you can contact Tiffany Lawson or Casey Conard for more information. Perspective students will live within the town, prospective students must live within the Town of Smyrna or attend a Smyrna middle or high school, and students will be traveling to Zama, Japan for two weeks this July. Reminder that the Town of Smyrna will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth, for Martin Luther King Day. Also need to let you know that on February fourteenth, that will be your last day to purchase a paver for the Coos Memorial for it to be included at our ribbon-cutting ceremony. You'll continue to be able to purchase them after that. We just won't be able to have it when we actually do our ribbon cutting in June. We also still have benches and planners that are available as well at, for the memorial. And also just wanted to remind you that school will be back in session on Monday, so those little babies will be out waiting at the bus stop. So make sure that you keep an eye out for kids waiting on the bus in those school zones. And I think there's a new law that you cannot use cell phones-
Must be hand-free.
Must be hands-free in school zones, or it's a fifty-dollar, up to a fifty-dollar fine. Is that what I saw? I think that's what I saw. I did get-
You can call him from the school zone and find out, I bet you. You'll find out real quick with that fee.
I was able to visit with Mike and Jill at the funeral on Sa-
Sunday.
Sunday. I was trying to think what day it was, on Sunday, and they both seemed to be doing well. I know it's been tough on them, but they did seem to be doing pretty well. And I talked to Mr. Gill today. I think Leanne's having a tough time, and so please make sure to keep Leanne and your thoughts and prayers. She was an only child, so I can only imagine how difficult that was. Anything else? If nothing else, then we are adjourned.